All right, all this speeding to order. Um, do a roll call. There we go. Um, Commissioner Cox.
President.
Commissioner Carroll.
President.
Commissioner Allen. And Commissioner Ganshaw.
President.
And Commissioner Corley, President. Um, via Zoom, Commissioner Hogan.
President.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Williams.
She must have stepped away for a second.
She's present on the Zoom. Uh, Commissioner McCormick.
President.
And Commissioner Fly.
I'm present.
And then on the telephone, telephone number. Is that Commissioner Millsap?
Yes, Commissioner Millsap is present. Thank you.
Derek, can you hear me now?
Um, yes, I hear you now, Nyla. Thank you.
All right, President.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We have 10 commissioners present, five in person, five via Zoom. Um, next order of business, Treasurers Report. Uh, Commissioner Williams.
Hi, everybody. Um, I emailed you all. Um, the Treasurers Report, like I stated, nothing has, um, been recorded, nothing has been spent out for the month of November. So our balance is at $2,298.92. So we're still at the same amount as we were last month. Nothing else to report at this time.
Motion to accept Treasurers Report.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Do we have any other discussion? See no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, I was able to get the November minutes, uh, done. I sent them out here probably in the last five or two minutes. Um, if you guys are comfortable, we can vote on that or we could just hold it over until the January meeting. There's no objection. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes.
I second that.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? See no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. Uh, and now new business, Commissioner Fly.
Yeah, how you guys doing today?
Good.
Um, let me try to get, uh, my camera rolling. Okay, grand rises, uh, commissioners. Uh, Fly High Youth was gonna do a presentation here with you guys today. I have the director of our back to school program, one of the directors that was gonna come in personally and do a presentation for you guys, but the time wasn't, um, adequate for them, so I'm gonna step in their place, okay? Is that okay with you guys?
Yes, sir.
I agree.
All right, I appreciate it. And before I really, really go on, I wanna say, um, please excuse my disgruntledness from the last, uh, meeting. That is, um, you know, I'm improving daily on my character and that's something that I still continually been trying to improve on. Um, there's no place for, uh, disgruntledness, whether you feel like you're right or you're wrong, you still need to have a code of conduct. And, um, I'm working, I'm a work in progress and, uh, please excuse my mannerism. Before, I felt bad about it, I reached out to Commissioner Williams for advice. I told her my soul wasn't resting peacefully and, um, she gave me some quite good advice, so I appreciate that, Ms. Williams. Okey dokey. Now, Fly High Youth After School. You were, thank you. Uh, Fly High Youth After School, am I accepted? Did anybody accept my, uh, excuses?
We, we, we all works in progress, my brother. You did very well.
Okay. I love your feedback. I don't wanna be talking to the wind, you know? But, uh, Fly High Youth After School Program is simply, uh, the SOAR program that we've been having, uh, been having for the last two years. Um, previously, we were located in Lakeland Estates Community Center Room. And, um, when COVID came, we had kinda shut down the SOAR program considering we couldn't, uh, can, uh, get together as one considering the virus. So now we're kinda getting it back up and, uh, really rolling without a question now. We have funding and we have, um, we have volunteers and we have staff members that's willing to, uh, take on all the positions that's needed. We, um, currently are moving to the Hope Center, the Hope Building, which is, uh, the Old Park School Building. And with that building, it's like an incubator for, uh, nonprofits. It gives you time, gives you, uh, space to, um, fulfill your agenda for the community and doing things within your community. And so, um, that was great to unite with, uh, Hope Agency and they're currently trying to reinvent themselves too and come back into the limelight, cause as you know, Hope was created by Becky Williams to rest her soul. And, uh, it's a blessing that is still around and still in movement and still in action and still providing a resource, even a space for other nonprofits here in town. So that's a great, great look on that behalf. The SOAR program in general is an after-school program, consists of tutoring, mentoring, um, all of the following that comes with the after-school programming. I don't have a presentation actually available or written out like the director had. Uh, she was really gonna come in and, and be more broad with it, but I wanted to give a, uh, insight of like, just briefly kinda what, what we're doing. So we're gonna be going 3:00 to 6:00 PM, five days a week. We located on the Hope Building where I said, and that's right in the heart, the heart of the less unfortunate or low-income families and a lot of, uh, a lot of black youth and black kids also. Not to say specifically it's directed there, you know, cause our program is, is diverse. We don't, uh, just accept black kids, but there's a need, there's a real big need for these kids to be able to, um, have somewhere to, to come to that's right in the neighborhood, easy to get to and have some positive mentors and tutors to look up to. Um, within that program, we do field trips, educational field trips, that's included. And we also help, uh, help with their schoolwork and any kind of behavior issues they having in school. Um, we kinda reach out to Michigan City area schools to see if they can also, and their parents also allow us to be involved with their monitoring, their schoolwork and also monitoring their behavior. I think the behavior is a major step when it comes to, um, improving with anything, you know, even with myself when I was disgruntled. That behavior gave a negative light, so therefore it's a negative light on, on not only me but also the organization. So once again, I wanna put my, um, apologies out there. And that's from my heart on that part, uh, cause it's a bigger picture than just, uh, you know, just getting on and rambling on about their services, you know? You're the person have to have a good character and you have to have trust, you have to gain the trust when you're dealing with people's money and people's kids. And, uh, I'm a work in progress and I'm, I'm the first to admit that. So, uh, Mr. Corley, my, my, um, over bruntly loud voice, I apologize, Ms. Williams, I apologize for my overwhelmingly voice. Uh, Mr. Cox, I want to apologize to each and every one of you personally, Ms. Ganshaw, even Mr. Kerry Hogan. I don't know if he resigned or if he's still apart, but he was available in there. Um, Ms. Allen, she's a very generous and sweet lady. Um, I don't wanna leave anyone out. Mr., um, uh, man, Millsap, Bingo. Yeah, I pretty much think I got everybody named, but that's what our after-school program really is. It's just somewhere where these kids can come and get help with their schoolwork, get tutored, have a positive light on their hand instead of getting out of school, ripping and running the streets, trying to give them a option. And also we'll be serving as a resource center for the local community if they need to come in and do resumes, come in and use the computer, come in and get stuff printed off, anything that can help them, um, succeed to the girls and what they're trying to do with their life and their kids. So, um, I won't take up too much time and, uh, unfortunately, I'm sorry, the director didn't make it. I wish she could have, cause I know she had it all laid out. Um, so that's it. If there's any questions for me, I'll be gladly to answer them.
Oh, first of all, Commissioner Fly, apology accepted and thank you for, uh, um, your apologies and, um, again, continue, thank you for your presence here in the commission. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, I do have some questions, but I will, uh, then, um, I'll let somebody else ask questions first. Anybody else have a question?
Hey, what, brother Fly?
How you doing, brother Cox?
I'm doing great, man. And it wasn't necessary to apologize to me, but, um, is it athletic, uh, program, any athletic programs involved with you, your group, other than the, I know you have the summer tournament?
Right, right.
Basketball, anything else?
Well, uh, actually on the athletic side, uh, you know, uh, with field trips and that sort, you know, they will be involved with them type of things. If the field trip consists of, uh, you know, any activities physically, that's cool too, but, uh, we don't have any, anyone lined up like, uh, any other athletic program initially. But we do have all kinds of special events within the SOAR program, which is the three-on-three basketball tournament. We also have double dutch tournaments for the, um, young ladies and the young ladies is able to play basketball also.
Okay, well, some years ago in Washington DC, we had a CAP program, we called it. Uh, came through People's Congregation Church and, um, what they did was to help instill discipline. They got a brother who was a karate expert or instructor to come out and just give basic lessons and we were surprised at how more disciplined those kids who were involved became. And it was free. It was free. They don't need any special equipment. You know, oh, you need some rope.
Right.
And it was, it was a big benefit to them because it gave them sense of confidence and it gave them a discipline aspect of just how to control themselves, you know? So maybe that's something we can look into together.
That sounds good. We did have, uh, a guy interested in starting a back, a boxing, um, somewhat of a boxing night-like type deal, training and that type of deal, but we haven't really, um, went back off into it too much until we really get going and get started. Cause once we really get back started and going strong, the disguise the limit, you know? Uh, there's nothing that we won't do that's advancing and positive for the youth. So, um, we always open to ideas and different things that ones might wanna present, even outsiders, cause you know, uh, Fly High Youth is the communities, you know? It's no one man, one deal thing and, um, as of right now, we're not looking for participants cause we have overlooked overwhelmingly a lot. And, uh, we just ready to get, get to going, you know? We just ready to go and, uh, we have transportation for the youth that can't walk there and also these programs are free. That's the main reason I kinda dealt with the nonprofit side, because I wanted the programs and activities and anything to be free to the community. And so, uh, there's no cost and we provide transportation.
Do I listen?
Kenny?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do you have, uh, before you start a lot of those physical programs like, uh, the boxing, if you wanna do that, I think a lot of the kids would be interested in that, but you need to make sure that you have the proper insurance?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, even with the boxing, thank you for your, um, input and advice on that. Um, even with the boxing, you know, it's not a for sure.
It's after school, so you know, like when you do physical things, they have to have a health, a health screen or a, uh, physical. They need to show that physical. They, um, and that's something that maybe a lot of kids would be interested in. The karate, uh, I'm experienced with because I had, uh, one of my children in that program to teach her.
I thought you was about to say YouTube.
Not hardly. Not hardly. I had enough karate, like, but, but you, you need to, um, have the physical and you need to have that in hand. Don't let somebody just say, well, yeah, I had one, because you don't want, you don't want that to be, uh, something that causes an issue.
Thank you, Ms. Ganshaw, for that effort.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
No contact, but who knows like that? It's gonna be good.
Box, you talk that.
Can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Question.
Yeah, this is, um, Nyla. Um, will there be any type of, um, you know, after-school nutrition or snack?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Good, good point, Nyla. Yes, we will provide snacks and after-school meals also, um, so we will keep the kids fed. I forgot about the food.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, we got, we got that and that was part of our funding, so we most definitely got to feed them, cause we have to take back that info to the people that gave us the money to feed them.
Gotcha. Also, Kenny, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of our children are falling short in math. If you could get somebody from the public schools to come and teach them math, because the new math.
Yes, yes, we have an old teacher.
Okay, that'll work.
Yes, yes, we have a, we have a couple of experienced teachers and they, they actually gonna be on the salary, so, um, one thing about this program that we advanced on is, uh, we included salary within our grant funding, because everyone is, you know, even though they got good hearts, you know, unfortunately, being a volunteer don't pay the bills. So, uh, that would make them more inclined to come and help us and work with the kids.
Kenny, uh, just briefly, I have a comment and obviously a question as well. You're a good man, sir.
You are, too, sir.
Huge support to the community and a lot of people need this and, um, I appreciate everything that you're doing for everybody. You know, you're stepping out when other people do not, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, I appreciate that, Hogan.
Part two, um, do you guys, do you accept volunteers, meaning if?
Oh, yeah.
Or somebody in the community, an adult that's in the house? Okay, we just get in touch with you?
We don't, we don't reject anyone and actually the kids that's in the program, they're just initially in the initial program, but we're not denying any kids. If they come to that door and wanna come in, we letting them in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Hogan.
Kenny Fly.
Yes, sir. Yo, sir, how I rock?
Hey, babe, I'm proud of you, man. Keep doing what you're doing. Uh, I don't think you owe any apology. I think what you did and said, uh, it was a time and place and, and, um, sometimes we're not given the time and you have to say what you have to say, but, um, we'll get better at what we, what we doing here. I'm just, I'm just so proud of you and everything that you're doing. Just keep doing what you're doing and everything gonna work out. Love, man.
I appreciate it, how I rock. You know, it's all the community effort, the group effort, man, you know? I be trying to sometimes shy away from the, uh, you know, the soloness of it, because you know, without the immunity supporters, donors, even grant providers, there'd be no such thing.
I just appreciate you, man. Just keep doing, keep doing what you're doing, cause we came a long way.
All of us, man. It's.
Yeah.
Any other questions from any of commissioners?
Cut-off party.
I just wanna, I just wanna conclude with that. Commissioner Fly, you've been doing a great job and we all appreciate it. Thank you so much.
That's good, man, man. I appreciate that comment and, uh, applaud from you, man, I really do. I really do. It just feel funny taking the all the player appraisal when, uh, it's so many more people that deserves it, you know? That's involved with Fly High Youth or in the community, but I appreciate it very much.
Any other questions from any of commissioners?
Mr. Fly, it's, um, Joan Ganshaw. I just wanted to say thank you for what you're offering to the community. All the positive is helpful.
Hello, Ms. Joan, how you doing today?
I'm great, thanks for asking. All right, thanks Kenny for all you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Joan.
Any other questions, any other commissioners? Just a couple of, Mr. Fly, you said five days a week, is that Monday through Friday?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Um, and you're, you're not taking any more youth, you said?
Yeah, as of right now, we, we not gonna overload it. We, we more than enough sufficient right now, but like I said, kids come to that door, Marty, you know? You know, we're not gonna turn them away, you know? We probably don't have them on, uh, field trips and stuff, but they need to come in and get some help with schoolwork or need a tutor, you know, mentor, hey, we taking them right out the door.
Okay, how, how many children do you presently have signed up?
Thirty. We have thirty kids signed up.
Okay, and your program director?
Yes, I'm one of the program directors. It's, uh, three program directors.
Okay. What are the other ones, their names?
Oh, yes, Ms. Taylor Tillman. And, uh, also Ms. Arielle Griffin, but she's an official Alabama, but she works with the computer system, you know, help us with the computer and send over things like that nature that you can do over the internet.
Okay.
Oh, and I can't forget, I almost forget one major, uh, director and, uh, I was glad to have her, Ms. Allison Skates of, uh, Fluid Coffee. Not only is she a board member and a representative of Fly High Youth, she's actually a director of the SOAR program. She wanted to get hands-on, so we jumped, jumped right in the boat, so she gonna see the diversity going on.
All right, thank you. And, um, and then I'm, uh, I've asked you in the past and ask you again, is there a wish list that you, that the commission can help you with?
Um, actually Marty, you know, uh, SOAR program was separate, but as of right now, we're doing a Christmas toy drive and coat drive. We have that December 24th at the Hope Building, our new location and, uh, as of now, we raised up like maybe $2,500. And, uh, also we have, uh, boxes located at small businesses for the coat drive. Um, actually, anything that can contribute to that, cause our mission is to have the kids that's, you know, usually that's fortunate and, uh, um, cook good Christmas dinner for them and everyone in the whole community, whole, almost the whole world is welcome to come actually, but I doubt that happens, but, um, you know, they can eat and everyone receive a gift of you from any, any age, any age group. We did this, this our third annual Christmas drive, Christmas giveaway last year. Um, we really wasn't that successful cause of COVID, but the year before, we had over $6,000 worth of, worth of everything and, uh, plenty of food, so it's wide open.
I remember, I was there.
Huh?
I remember, I was there.
Oh, yeah, you did, yep, sure did. Mrs. Cox said it was a good turnout, wasn't it, brother?
Fantastic.
Yes, sir, man, many happy kids. We have pictures galore. I just, I just pray for another one and let them know it's all free, man. Everything we do is free. Um, I wouldn't charge them if we had to.
All right, thank you. Any other commissioners with any questions?
Thank you, Marty.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Fly, for your, uh, presentation and your time. Um, going on to all business nominated committee, um, the nominated committee is, uh, made up of Mrs. Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Tillman and Commissioner Norvell. If you're interested in any of the positions on the executive committee, please notify them. We will have our, according to the bylaws, we will be, we have our, um, elections, January the 12th, at our January 12th meeting. Um, so the nominated committee will bring forward the people that contacted them and then also we can take nominations from the floor. Any questions reference to nominating committee? Next, uh, bylaws. Uh, I was, I did have the bylaws ready to send out, but I know there is a resolution or new ordinance referenced residency, so I've held off on sending those out, so I can have that put in there. Um, I didn't attend the city council meeting, I'm not sure where we're at right now, so I'll contact Commissioner Tillman and ask her exactly where we're at and if that goes into effect, then that will, uh, that would affect the residency per, part of the by, of the ordinance, which would then affect the bylaws. So then we'll include that in the bylaws and I'll try to get that out, um, here soon, so we can have it for the next meeting and thirty days prior to the meeting, we need to, we have the new bylaws thirty days prior to a meeting in order to vote on them. So, um, if I can get that in the next couple of days, we'll be closer, if not, we can get that all voted on by the, hopefully the January, at the latest, a February meeting. Any other questions about bylaws?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
Where are we yet, where are we at on the attendance?
Uh, what about attendance?
Where, what, what do we have in place for, uh, consequences if a person misses too many meetings?
Uh, I don't think there's nothing, there's really no, uh, set, nothing set in the bylaws about any consequences.
Yeah, I, I, I move that we, we reexamine that and, and add, uh, consequences to, uh, after a person meeting, miss a certain, uh, a certain number of, uh, meetings, it should be removed.
So.
And just.
So when I, so.
With this.
Right, so, so when we send out the bylaws and it comes up for a vote, you can make that motion when that comes up for a vote for the bylaws. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Any other question or comments about bylaws? All right, fundraising, um, no new developments with fundraising, um, so if anybody had any discussion about that, hear it, if not, we can move on. All right, subcommittee reports, uh, Dr. McCollum couldn't make it, but sent the email, basically saying everything's still the same from last month as far as positions, uh, uh, needed at the school system, transportation and food service, instructional assistance impaired professionals and special education positions. Um, you can check the school website for that and also please check with the building principals on ways in which you can volunteer in, uh, school buildings. Next, uh, health, Commissioner Allen or Williams?
I don't have anything new, uh, other than we did have our COVID clinic booster shot this week and that's the only thing so far that I have.
How successful was that?
Very successful, yes. We had that, we had it at the Michigan City Housing Authority, uh, that's where we gave the Johnson and Johnson shot, I think it was like back in March, and so it's time for them to get their booster shot and we had those residents plus the public. And, uh, Health Link, um, was our partner in that.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Williams?
I don't have anything. No, thank you.
Thank you. Employment, Commissioner Millsap.
Yes, uh, I received a communication from the commissioner's office reference to county openings. I think you sent out a, uh, notice of, uh, employment opportunities, but thank you for doing that. That's the only thing I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Millsap. Um, criminal justice, Commissioner Ganshaw.
Thank you, everyone. Um, just a reminder, um, regarding drug-free partnership, it usually meets the first Wednesday of every month. They will not have a January meeting, just so you're aware. And also, um, Mr. Corley sent out for everyone peer support counseling training that's available through the state for free, so that's for substance abuse and it's a state certification. So it's a wonderful thing if people can attend. Um, you are certified, you can get paid positions both at treatment facilities or any organization that may want to hire those or write those folks in. Um, it's a great asset to our community and to be able to do it at no cost, um, is not, doesn't happen very often, so. It is done by Health Link, so if you'll go to Health Link and also I think Mr. Corley sent out the link, so. Um, and that's pretty much it for me.
Thank you. Uh, social factors, um, nothing new, other than we're continuing to work with the Michigan City Black History Month Committee for, uh, February Black History Month celebrations going pretty well, so I have an update coming closer. Um, sorry, I, what I forgot to do is after each section, are there any questions, um, by any, uh, commissioner, reference any of the subcommittee reports? No questions, uh, anything, next, good of the order, anything for the good of the order?
Uh, the good of the order, I think that, uh, of social status can, um, possibly consider donating to our toy drive, that would be great. Um, I don't know what, uh, procedures I would have to go through to do that. Um, to Fly High Youth Services, $50, $100, anything would be granted and get, um, really, um, loved by, uh, Fly High Youth.
All right, uh, commissioners here, request from, uh, Mr. Fly. Um, all I really would take is a motion, one anyway.
Make a motion and donate a couple hundred dollars, so.
Okay, um, I have a motion for $200. Motion for $200, I hear a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, um, any further discussion?
Yeah, I was just gonna say 200.
Okay, yeah, and so.
You know, I'm looking at the dollars.
Right, yeah, so looking at the, looking at our balance, uh.
Two, cause that puts you at a two bread.
Yeah, so looking at, looking at, looking at our balance, uh, Mr. Fly, and thank you for asking, because I was actually thinking about, um... um, when he was talking about the toy drive given, so thank you for asking. Thank you, uh Mr. Cox for the motion, and thank you Pass Care for the second. Um, if we give two hundred dollars, that put us right at two thousand, so we still have money left over for our scholarships and we still look forward to some fundraising activities to get money up there, so um, seeing no further discussion, um all in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, that passes, um, and we'll have to give the controllers office about getting that, that check, that cut, that check cut. Um, I will get these minutes done like right now because that's one of the things they ask for, for cutting money, so I will get these minutes done ASAP. So we can get the, get the money to you, Mr. Fly.
Thank you, guys. Fly High Youth appreciates all of you. Hey, you're welcome to come to the, come also. We have food. We won't have a present, but we have food.
When, when is it, when is the event again? I'm sorry.
The twenty-fourth Christmas Eve, it began in at eleven, but twelve o'clock would be appropriate time to come until, and we're gonna stay until everything's gone.
Okay. Alright, um, anything else for the good of the order? Mr. Go, do you have any public comment on Zoom? No? See no public here? Alright, no public comment? Um, so motion adjourned?
Second.
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, before we adjourn, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh, I missed uh Director uh George. Did you have anything? I think she was on. Oh, maybe she got off, okay. Um, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Thank you, uh, see you all January twelfth. Uh, also, uh pay attention to your expiration dates, so if you need to um get in to renew, um please get your organization in with uh the appropriate bodies to get your renewal in. Thank you.
Alright, take care.